Welcome to this January, what is it, 13th meeting of the Somerville School Committee. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2025, this meeting of the school committee will be conducted via hybrid participation. We will post an audio recording, audio video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Somerville website and local cable access government channels. Superintendent, will you call the roll?
Through the chair, Ms. Peton. Dr. Ackman.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Peton.
Here.
President Pinera Nufel. Mayor Valentine. Ms. Barish.
Here.
Dr. Phillips.
Here.
Chair Crippson.
Here.
We have Quorum.
Okay, we will start with a moment of silence and a salute to the block.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now introduce our interpreters who are here on Zoom. Spanish, if you want to unmute yourself and introduce yourself. And Portuguese?
Good evening. My name is Tema Leitão. I will be your Portuguese interpreter for tonight. To listen to this meeting, click the globe on the bottom of your screen and select the Portuguese. Boa noite. Meu nome é Tema Leitão e serei seu intérprete de português essa noite. Para ouvir essa reunião, clique no ícone do globo na parte inferior da sua tela e selecione o idioma português.
Thanks, and Haitian Creole?
Bonsoir a todo mundo. Me relégin a Miranda. C'est moi-même qui vais l'intépréter pour assouha. Sou tar remettade en créole haïtien. S'il vous plaît, cliquez sur un timon ou à poli en bleu, même sous almaque français, obtenez en créole haïtien. Good evening. My name is Gina Miranda. I'll be your Haitian Creole interpreter for tonight if you would like to listen to it. Haitian Creole, even though it says French, you will hear in Haitian Creole. Please click on the globe. Thank you.
Thank you. We will start with a report from our student rep, who I believe is joining us on Zoom.
Hi, everyone. My name is Champa and I'm the student representative. And there's been a few fun and new events that are happening around Somerville High. Starting on Wednesday, course selection begins for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors this Wednesday, along with the introduction of the new course selection fair on Wednesday, where students will have a chance to explore new electives and classes by running around the high school during X block. Further access testing for non-English speakers begins next week, along with mock AP tests in the mornings, creating late starts all throughout next week. On the other hand, the Spark Scholarship opened their application to sophomores and juniors, which provides a $3,500 scholarship to a summer program of a student's choice. Moreover, the high school's very famous multicultural fair, its planning has begun and the fair will take place sometime in April. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? I'm excited to hear about the course selection fair. That sounds like a great opportunity. Yeah?
I think it's actually for the superintendent, but I know there have been questions from parents recently about the course catalog at the high school. And I have this vague recollection of maybe four times before COVID, at least getting a school committee at least get a presentation in the spring about the upcoming course catalog. And I was wondering if we could maybe have someone like that again at some point this spring, just so that we're versed in what's going on on those issues. I think especially in a time of change, just helps us know what the high school's planning.
Thank you. I definitely can have that conversation with the high school team.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for joining us, Champa. That brings us to approval of minutes. We have some minutes to approve. It'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes from the meetings of November 25th, December 9th, and December 16th.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Barish, seconded by Mr. Peton. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to public comment. We have one public commenter. Do we have anyone for public comment on Zoom? Okay, I will read our instructions. Welcome and thank you to those who've signed up for public comment. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material. However, the chair may limit comments to two minutes based on the number of individuals signed up to speak. You will have three minutes since we just have one speaker this evening. Speakers should begin their comments by stating their name and address, or in the case of district employees, their role within the district. The chair of the meeting, after a warning, reserves the right to terminate speech, which is not constitutionally protected, because it constitutes true threats that are likely to provoke a violent reaction and cause a breach of the peace, or incitement to imminent lawless conduct or which contains obscenities. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between the public and the committee. Members of the committee will not reply to public comment in the course of the meeting, though individual members may follow up and items from public comment may be taken up in future meetings. The school committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor against any member of the school community in public session. Individuals may address topics on the agenda or items within the school committee's scope of responsibility, such as the district budget, goals and policies, or role of the superintendent. The public is encouraged to submit comments and writing for inclusion in the public record. With that, we have DeShawn. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is DeShawn Simmons. I'm a resident of Ward Seven, and I'm a middle school history educator, as well as the very proud president of the Somerville Educators Union. When the topic of rats and rodent infestation comes up within this body, and we chuckle because it seems ridiculous, and let's be clear, it absolutely is ridiculous, that we have a rodent infestation of this magnitude in all of our city buildings, including our schools and our firehouses. However, I'm here tonight because too many of our educators know the infestation in our buildings are no laughing matter. We are tired of hearing the city place the blame at our educators' feet for not doing enough to keep our buildings tidy. In 2025, we're asking educators to teach math, science, social studies, ELAs, social emotional learning, be a mentor, attend co-curricular events, coach this team, go on this overnight trip, plan interventions for your entire class roster, and the list goes on. Our educators are far too busy developing our countries tomorrow, so no, we cannot ask educators to also become custodians on top of it all. There's a great group of union folks that do that important work in our buildings already. What messages are we sending to our educators that their administrators are being sent pictures when a student forgets to throw out a wrapper in their classroom at the end of the day? Our educators are trying their hardest on any given day, and for city leadership to blame them is not only a cop-out, it's advocating their responsibilities to take care of our facilities. The solutions the city has given so far for this issue have been lazy, at best, and neglectful, at worst. One of the solutions is to ask educators to have plastic containers to keep items away from pests. Nationally, on average, educators spend around $500 to $750 of their own money to furnish their classrooms, to stock their room, and decorate their room. Now we're asking educators to spend more of their own money to solve a problem the city's ignoring? No, that's not an option for us at this point. What is more concerning is the city's leadership's lack of transparency regarding any of their processes. The SCU understands there are a number of facilities-related issues that this body needs to be updated on, and yet I see no one here from the city leadership to explain what caused the boiler breakdown at the Brown School last Monday. That caused an early school closure for those students and staff. What caused that boiler failure? What steps has the city taken to ensure this doesn't happen to our students and staff again? How many times can the educators ask the city leadership to care about them and the lives of their students and families? The SEU is imploring this school committee to do whatever is within your control to ensure the city is being a good partner to the district, to ensure the good for our students and staff. If city leadership will be willing to work together, we wouldn't have educators worrying about their students sitting on or getting mouse poop in their mouth, which actually happened, or students being too cold to learn, which also happened. Our students and staff simply deserve more from this city. Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to the report. The superintendent, Dr. Ackman?
Thank you through the chair, and happy new year, and welcome back to everyone for our first meeting of the year. So today we have an agenda that reflects the rich and diverse culture of Somerville Public Schools. So today's agenda includes important updates, starting with Dr. Boston Davis. Dr. Davis will lead us through a review of the proposed calendar for the 2025-2026 school year. This proposal builds on previous successes while introducing some key changes, aim at improving functionality, and ensuring the critical elements remain intact. Next, we'll hear from the SFLC Multilingual Services Team. We are fortunate to have a dedicated group of translators and interpreters who do incredible work in supporting our district's families. This team truly embodies the priorities of our strategic plan, especially in the area of equity and access, and family and community engagement. During the presentation, you will hear how they meet families where they are, using culturally responsive strategies and communicating in their native languages. So thank you. Also, before we proceed, I'd like to take a moment to celebrate some of our staff's recent achievements. Thank you to the Somerville Times for awarding us the best idea of 2024, the free food market for Somerville Public School families. And so I don't know where the award is, if there's a little trophy, but I'll take it. And a shout out to the SFLC staff and to our volunteers for organizing and staffing this event on the first Tuesday of every month. Switching gears, I'd like to provide an update on the Brown Boiler. As many of you know, last Monday, we had a heating failure with the boiler at the Brown School on a day in which temperatures were below freezing. As a result, we had to make the difficult decision to dismiss the school early. I want to express my gratitude to the students, staff, and families at the Brown School, along with our central office staff. Everyone worked quickly to ensure that students were safely dismissed and also received lunch prior to dismissal. I also want to thank DPW for their quick response. DPW identified that the issue was due to a sensor failure and a frozen pipe connected to the boiler. The problem was discovered early in the morning and resolved by 3:00 PM that same day. If you have any detailed questions, the city has communicated that they will provide an update on the boiler at the next joint school committee and city council meeting on facilities. The date, we don't have it yet, but it will be shared with you as soon as that's available. And before we continue, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge and celebrate Martin Luther King Junior Day. Each year, we honor his extraordinary legacy of nonviolence, justice for all, and collaboration across all walks of life. As we move into today's meeting, I want us to reflect on Dr. King's words from his "I Have a Dream" speech. "We're now faced with the fact that tomorrow is today. We are confronted with the fierce urgency of now. Now is the time to make real the promises of democracy." Let's carry that sense of urgency into our work. We are tasked with creating the future that Dr. King envisioned, one where every student has the opportunity to thrive and where academic excellence is available to all. I also want to highlight that our Director of Equity and Excellence, Kelly Galetano, is organizing an MLK Day celebration with the City of Somerville on January 20th at 11:00 AM at the East Somerville School. There will be food, entertainment, and a panel discussion. A big thank you to Kelly for putting this together. And obviously, she worked with the city on this. And I'm gonna turn now to, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Dr. Boston Davis. Before I do that, I am gonna change the order of my presentation, which is I'm gonna have SFLC and the language team come up, so we can actually let you do your presentation and then be on your own. So thank you. I'll have Ruth Santos introduce the team.
Good evening, everybody. It's really nice to be here again, this time with our multilingual services team for the evening. I think we can all agree that multilingual support is an invaluable backbone to the work that we do here at SPS, and not just for family engagement. When we look around the district and we see letters, messages, emergency messages, flyers, presentations, interpretation for workshops and assemblies, we can really see the work that we do. And I'm proud to introduce you to the mostly invisible team who does that work tonight. From left to right on the screen, we have Viviana, Angie, who was feeling poorly and couldn't be with us, unfortunately, so I'll stand in for her, and Michaela and Venusa, who are here with us, and we'll be talking in a minute. Next slide, please, So a brief timeline of where multilingual services has come from over the last 16 years. Back in 2008, it was mostly parent information center staff who were doing multilingual services for the school district, the interpreters and translators. Regina clearly realized that that was not sustainable, and by 2012, she had developed and trained a pool of local interpreters to help with that work. By 2018, we were able to hire a full-time coordinator for that pool of interpreters who worked with the pool and the agencies. And then 2020, ESA funds helped us establish a consolidated Office of Multilingual Services. And here we are now with our full-time coordinator and three full-time translator interpreters doing the work. So thank you so much for the support that you do on behalf of families. The office keeps going from strength to strength in terms of professionalization of language access for families and for standardizing the systems that we use to create that access. So I'm gonna hand over to Venusa, who will share a little bit of data with us.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Venusa Teixeira, the Portuguese interpreter translator. I'm originally from Brazil, and my two kids went to Somerville Schools. Today, I'm excited to share an overview to an incredible work being done by our multilingual service office. As you know, our mission is to ensure that every family in our district has equitable access to critical information regardless of the language they speak. The data I'm sharing with you today is for the first four months of the school year. As you can see, we have covered 131 events where interpretation services were provided and translated 136 documents, amounting to around 600 pages. I'm proud to report that we have successfully fulfilled 100% of those translation requests and 96% of the interpretation requests. The most frequently requested languages this year have been Portuguese, Spanish, and Haitian Creole, which consistently see the highest demand in the order that was mentioned, followed by Arabic and Mandarin, which are the next most requested languages. The charts on the right side of the slide show how both interpretation and translation services were covered. As you can see, the majority of all requests have been covered by in-house staff. Thank you, and I will now hand it over to Michaela. Next slide, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michaela Yang, and I'm the coordinator for multilingual services. I'm of Korean descent and was born and raised in Argentina. As Ruth briefly mentioned before, we are a fairly new-created office, and though we've come a very long way, we are still constantly working hard to find ways to ensure that every multilingual family in our district has access to clear information and meaningful engagement through high-quality interpretation and translation services. Until recently, there was no specific training for interpretation in education. The closest we had was medical. But DESI has now started to standardize practices and has created a training program only last year. This year, we were awarded a DESI grant that enabled us to provide this training program to our full-time staff, including special ed interpreters and some members of our pool, making us one of the first districts in Massachusetts to do so. Now all our pool members must pass a language assessment and DESI introductory training for interpretation in education. This grant will also allow me to complete my training to become a DESI-certified trainer by the end of this school year, and we are hoping that by doing so, will enable us to train more staff internally and maybe become a training center for other districts. Another initiative this year is creating a district-wide glossary for educational terms that don't have a direct equivalent in other languages, and we are hoping to share that district-wise to ensure consistency. Over the course of this year, we were able to significantly grow the number of interpreters in our pool, lessening the reliance we had on agencies. And by doing so, we were able to cut our expenses by half. This also meant that payroll had to process lots and lots more individual time sheets, so I would like to take a minute and thank Mary Kelly and all the payroll team for so graciously helping us make this transition a success. We are very grateful for the support we receive, and I am very proud to say that thanks to what was done before me and what we're still working on, we are leading the way in advancing multilingual education in Massachusetts. Thank you.
I will now bring it back to Ruth.
So I'm replacing Angie here, and I'll try my best to get it right. Translation and interpretation are terms I think that are often used interchangeably, but I want to clarify that translation is always for written services, interpretation is always for verbal services. I'm gonna talk a little bit about interpretation this evening, and how lucky we are that our office can offer two types of interpretation, both consecutive and simultaneous. So consecutive interpretation happens during a conversation, and the interpreter interprets between pauses. And an example of that might be in a 504 meeting or a parent-teacher conference, where an educator might speak and wait a second for the interpreter to interpret for the family, and back again. Simultaneous interpretation also happens throughout SPS during the year, and this is where the interpreter interprets live at the same time as the speaker. So an example of that might be in an assembly, or the moving on ceremony, or right here, right now, at school committee. Simultaneous interpretation is a highly skilled and very challenging job, and we're really lucky to have people on our staff and in our pool who can do that work. Our full-time interpreters are on call to receive phone calls during work hours and very often outside of work hours, too, which means that anyone in the district can get interpretation in our main three languages. We also use the language line for low-incidence languages, or when our staff are busy on other projects. Since September, we facilitated over 131 interpreted sessions. Each request of those 131 could be for one interpreter, for example, a principal who needs interpretation for a conversation with a family, or it could be for eight interpreters for a parent-teacher conference. And in fact, I believe the number up there says that for each round of parent-teacher conferences, our multilingual team is supporting 576 families, which just shows the hours of the work that they put in for that. Looking ahead, people often ask the team about AI, and the team, too, is very excited about the future and how AI can support us. They do a lot of research, it's Michaela's secret passion, into where this could go in the future, and so far haven't been able to find anything that lives up to the high standards that we need for our translation interpretation services, and certainly nothing that approaches the family engagement aspect of a real, live person sitting with a family while we're having a conversation to understand a little bit more. Another thing on our minds is our headset equipment pictured here, which is getting really old and is going to need replacing soon, and it's another reason that we keep looking at AI for possible alternatives, but we're not quite there yet. I'm gonna hand over now to Viviana, who's gonna talk a little bit about the translation part of the work.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Viviana Tool. I'm originally from Bogota, Colombia, and I'm the Spanish translator and interpreter for the district. Like Ruth mentioned, translation is when we convert written communication into another language. All translation requests come through a standardized form, then they're assigned by order of priority and then, and language, to our full-time translators. To date, during this school year alone, we have processed 136 translation requests, which equals to about 600 pages. These numbers tell part of the story, but the real difference lies in our approach. It is common misconception that translated documents is a simple task for bilingual individuals, or even with AI tools, but, which they are really helpful and we use them. But our process is much more thoughtful. We focus on quality. We don't just translate word for word. We make sure the message makes sense and delivers the actual meaning. We think about the audience. We adapt the text to be culturally sensitive and neutral. This can be tricky. For example, in the Spanish, our work can mean different things depending on the country or the region even. And finally, we carefully edit and review every single document. We are proud to be part of this important work, creating an inclusive community where all families can stay informed and connected. On behalf of the team, we want to thank you all for your time, and now we leave some time for questions, if you have. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I will now open it up to my colleagues for questions. Dr. Ackman?
Thank you through the chair. I mean, thank you for your work. Thank you for this presentation. I'm inspired. I appreciate the humor of the middle quote there. So thank you for also, you know, lightening us with your humor. I mean, that's like, that's, and that someone's comfortable enough to do that speaks a lot, so like, kudos there. I want to note, sometime in the spring, I had coffee with Senator Pat Jalen, and one of the first things she said to me was, if you could wave a magic wand, like, what is, give me three things that you would want for the district. And the first thing out of my mouth was, I'd want every educator to be multilingual. And I didn't know how much closer, like, I didn't realize how, we're closer to that through you, not every educator, in ways I didn't know before seeing this presentation. And I'm appreciative, and I look forward to continuing to support your work. Thank you so much. No question.
Thanks. Through you, chair. Thank you for this great presentation, and more importantly, for your great work. We are so lucky to have you. At the midterm organizational meeting last week, the mayor was very excited about the translation services the city is about to start providing, and I would love to know a little bit more about how our work fits with theirs, and, yeah.
I'm gonna hand it now to Ruth.
So, yes, the city just hired somebody about a year ago, I think, to do the coordinating of their services. We actually had a meeting scheduled for a couple of weeks ago to start developing a community of practice between us with the special ed interpreters and the city interpreters, translators as well. We had to cancel it for various reasons, but that is going to be rescheduled. We want to do a joint glossary so that communications going out from both city and schools are using the same terminology, and we want to make sure schools are using the same terminology, and we want to make sure that we're on the same page about how we, how we, how we approach different facets of our translation/interpretation. So thank you for that, but we will, yes, hopefully be working more closely with them in the future.
All right. Are there any other questions from my colleagues? You guys did such a great job. You covered everything, so thank you. Our next topic, which I believe Dr. Bosson, ladies and gentlemen...
Thank you Superintendent Carmona, and through the chair. Good evening, everyone. I will be tapping into their services very shortly, once our calendar is passed, so, and they do an excellent, excellent job. So I have before you the first draft of the 2025-2026 school year calendar. I just want to note, um, do you have it printed as well, that I have all the years past as well? Do you have those printed? Excellent, thank you. So I just want to note, just because it was helpful, I found it helpful last year, that you do have in front of you as well, and in the packet for those that are viewing at home, all the way from the 2022-2023 school year. And I, just for reference, the first year that I was assumed this role and then completed the calendar was the 2023-2024 school year. So I just wanted to show you kind of the evolution over time, and also, you know, as you're thinking about dates, and, you know, you can kind of see what past practice looked like. So, the main purpose of our calendar, as you know, is to communicate the days which school is open and school is closed during the school year. It also communicates when our offices are open and closed. And our calendar also notifies the community when there are religious and cultural holidays that many students and community members may observe. So, a couple of notes. The first is that, and these are just some questions that have come up and may be helpful. We are scheduled per DESI regulation for the time, student learning time regulations, we schedule until the 185th day. So that's why you'll notice in June 22 of 2026 has 185 days. Part of that regulation is that the school committee must schedule up to 185 days and then operate the school year for no less than 180 days. So that's why our 180th day is the last day of school, and we're scheduled for 185 days. And so that's just one question that often comes up. And then I just want to kind of draw your attention to one piece that you might have noticed, which is the biggest difference from this year to the years over the past two years, and that is, there's, this is a one-sided calendar this year. So in the past two years, since I've assumed this role, I've included a list that you can see from last year and the year before of different religious and cultural observances and holidays. And I really wanted to do that, and we wanted to do that in community, so I partnered with Kaylee Galatano, we partnered with the SFLC, Ruth Santos was one of the people at the table, know me. Davidson was still in the director role of that department. And we really wanted to celebrate and recognize the rich diversity of our community. And so that was the main driving force in putting that document there. Since the list of cultural and religious holidays and observances has been added, Kaylee has developed, Kaylee Galatano, Director for Equity and Excellence, has developed systems and structures, such as a calendar that is emailed monthly, that has not only the cultural and religious holidays that are in observances that are on the back, but also links to resources and other kind of helpful tools and events that are happening. And so when I think about the purpose of the calendar and the document, and we think about the systems and structures that are already existing, I believe, my proposal this year, but I'm opening, you know, I'm hoping to get your feedback on this, is that that kind of list that will change into more of a live document is one that the Director for Equity and Excellence will go forward, will maintain, and will sit side by side on our website, along with our school year calendar. My hope is that the calendar then serves the purpose more of just communicating when our schools are open and closed, and when our offices are open and closed, and if there's an observance that we missed, if there's a date that's slightly incorrect, which happens, even when we comb through the document 20 times and I send it to all the stakeholders and everyone, it always happens, that would avoid us having to send out, and I say "us," but I'm looking at Erica Garcia, who is really the person who maintains this, multiple times throughout the school year. So it really is trying to avoid having to resend when there's a date, say, a small date on the back, or, you know, a capitalization error, or something along those lines, which it could very well be in a live document with resources for the community, for our educators, which is really the point of that. So, that is the proposal for the, for the new calendar. There may be other questions about dates, which I'm happy to entertain at this time. So there's the first draft for you.
Okay, thank you so much. Dr. Ackman?
Thank you, through the chair. Thank you. I have, it has been a joy watching the evolution of this calendar over the years, and I know you've put a lot of work into it, and, um, thank you. The one thing that I guess I would ask from a parent perspective, the red key for no school, the professional development key, also note, like, no school for students or something like that, like, you know, again, trying to put my parent hat on, like, what do I want to know, is when my kids are in school and not?
Yeah, to build off of that, just looking at the calendar, I might guess students come back January 2nd.
Yes.
Even though it's green, and I know it's, and down here it says 5, so just maybe under the key, it could say professional development for educators, no school for students, or something like that. Yes, Ms. Peton?
Through you, Chair, just a quick follow-up. I mean, you could just, I'm not meaning to do any design work, but it could just be both colors, like, with a diagonal of both, if you want to follow the key that you've already created, so that you can put both colors on there. Just an idea.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Peton?
Thank you, Dr. Davis, for this excellent work. It gets better every year. We've recently had questions in the community about the beginning of school, and why...
Your mic is not on.
Maybe I'm just not talking to it? Am I cool? Maybe I just, it's because I wasn't speaking through the chair, through the chair. That unlocks a lot of doors. So, about the start of school, we have traditionally, and I see it here, still having a start date on a Wednesday as a half-day, or a early release day, a full day on Thursday, and then the Friday before Labor Day off. I don't know why this is our calendar. Is there a particular reason why we, through the chair, have this schedule?
I think Mr. Green wants to attempt to answer this one.
So, the short answer is, it's in the contract with the teachers. It has been in the contract at least as long as I've been on the school committee. My first question, my first school committee meeting was actually about this, because like, then it was the first meeting of the year, so we brought it on the calendar. The leadership at the time actually took the question back to principals, who, at the time, unanimously said they still liked this, what we call the soft start. And while that could be changed through contract negotiations, I think this is worth saying this in general, if there are changes to the school day of the school year or anything like that, they aren't reflected in documentation until they're approved. So even if we were to think about changing that, it would not show up in here until an agreement was done. But yeah, I asked this question a decade ago. God, let me feel old. And at the time, the unanimous opinion of the administrators was that starting with the half, with the half-day full day allowed students to ease into the school year and allow the district to hit the ground running on a Tuesday after...
Dr. Ackman?
Thank you, through the chair. Just a yes and, what Mr. Green said, from an equity perspective, that hit the ground running is a chance on those days for students who wouldn't, you know, get, get their backpack and supplies through the district, are able to get those. I know the backpack program is able to provide food over that long weekend, you know, which we know is a four-day weekend because of our calendar, to, um, to families. So there's, it's, you know, from an academic perspective, but also from an equity perspective, looking at the students who, who we serve, there are, that's just another reason for it.
Okay, and then Ms. Peton?
Other reason for all of this is rational climate change. Days in August and September are more valuable than days in June. And while it is true that we haven't had student unemployment for four years, the feeling, the feeling at the time was that we could have another 2017 again, and then, yeah, whatever year it was. And so there's also some feeling that starting a school year earlier allows for better educational programming and less likelihood of being in school come June 30th.
Thank you, through you, Chair. Thank you to my two colleagues for sharing some of the history, and I was just going to add a little bit more. Back in the dawn of time, before this was in the contract, I wasn't even on the school committee, but I was a parent, the date would change each year depending on where Labor Day was. So some years we'd start before Labor Day, some years we'd start after Labor Day. So there was a desire to have some level of consistency, which I think, as a parent, I know it's complicated, but to always know we're coming back the Wednesday before Labor Day, there's just no question mark in anybody's mind, which has some value. Another piece is, you know, the challenges associated with the years that we've had snow. And this change happened one of those years that we had a ton of snow, and it really pushed us, and we were in a risk point where we actually couldn't finish our school year, because we can only go so many days after the...
We had to have school on a Saturday, as I recall.
That was from the brown, that was for the problems with the brown roof.
Thank you.
I never thought that I would be the trove of history. So it, fortunately, in the last several years, or unfortunately, depending on your thoughts on about climate change, or if you love snow, we haven't had that as a challenge. But there, there was one year where they were like, "Oh, my gosh, we can't, contractually, we can't go any further than this, and we won't get all our days," and we were okay, it turned out fine, but this was like, here we are, we have a consistent plan, there's no question mark, we've mitigated a lot of risk. Obviously, it does create some concerns for some families, and it causes, um, uh, things that creates issues that are not ideal for people, but from my perspective, I feel like the positives have outweighed the negatives. But, um, you know, if this is something that comes up in contract, we'll be happy to discuss it, so.
Dr. Phillips, and then Mr. Peton?
I'm about to change the subject. Were you going to say something on the subject? Okay, awesome. I love the changes to the calendar. I fully support it. And I wonder, through you, Chair, if it would be possible to refer our policies that talk about religious observances to rules, to think through how we're giving kids space to not be in school and not do work on their religious, major religious days. And I say this, so that would be IMD, JJE, and JH. And I say this because every year, I get a call from at least one Jewish family that is really upset that a major Jewish holiday, which is often on the back, is not on the front, and teachers are assigning homework, and we have school. And so just to clarify for them, here's what, you know, your student doesn't have to come to school, your student doesn't have to do the work, this is how we will support you. Seems like the right place to do it, so hoping we can make that referral.
Makes sense. Chair of Rules? Noted. Okay. I had Mr. Peton, and then Ms. Peton.
Thank you, Chair, through you. So, I understand that the Director of Equity and Excellence will be sharing information sort of in a rolling fashion, primarily with educators. I do want to note that many of our educational partners, including the PTAs and, you know, other people who use the school calendar to inform their programming, rely on, on this document. So, can you, through the chair, talk a little bit about how communication with those partners will work, if it's not all in that single place? I guess it's just online, is that...
Could I make a quick suggestion related to that? Perhaps just on here somewhere, it has a link to and for the full religious calendar, go here. I don't know if you wanted to respond in more than that, or if you had other thoughts?
Thank you, through the chair. Thank you for the question. Thank you for the suggestion. We'll, we'll take that. My initial idea, so, was hoping to get some feedback today and before kind of fully fleshing it out, but the initial idea is that there is a live document, but not necessarily rolling. So I think that we can start the year, next year, with a similar list. Ms. Garcia did an excellent job updating the list on the second page, so it's updated. So we can have a similar list, but it will be maintained by our Director for Equity. And as months go on, we can have an updated kind of monthly calendar as well. And, you know, we can either link them next to each other on the webpage. I'll also have to talk to Communications about what makes sense, but we can link them next to each other, on one another. It could be under the Department of Equity's webpage. This year, those newsletters that she sends with the calendars at the top have been for, as you know, K-12. But my vision for this would be that going forward, the calendar itself is now public-facing to the exact points that you make. So I think it can be a little bit of both. One, we can have a list of documents, love the idea of linking it, and then also, sorry, a list of dates that can be linked to this document, but then also, as regularly updated with links to, to some information.
I had Ms. Peton, and then Ms. Barish.
Thank you, through you, Chair. I just wanted to acknowledge, Dr. Phillips, I think that was a great idea to have a review in Rules. I look forward to that. I apologize, I might have missed the end of your conversation, but all I was going to suggest is that on the bottom, there's a reference to the link to the online. Is that what you already said? Okay, I just want to make sure that, because I know that the calendar itself can change. And so being very clear that, like, this is what was established at the beginning of the year, and that the live calendar would be online. So I guess you already covered it, so, thank you.
Ms. Barish?
I was just wondering, sort of, Dr. Phillips made her suggestion, and then Mr. Peton made his, and I'm wondering if it makes sense to reference those policies, either on this calendar or on that webpage with the list of holidays and observances. Certainly, we will review those policies, but making it easy for families to find those policies might be helpful as well.
Okay. Are there any, oh, yeah, Mr. Peton?
This is just a minor question, but while I have the, the opportunity, through you, Chair. I noticed a minor change in the wording around when holidays that start at sundown. I don't object or have a preference either way, I just noted the change. And it may be confusing for some folks, so just, um, I don't know if there was a particular, if this is best practice or something, but I just wanted to point out the change.
You're pointing out that the calendar now does not have...
The calendar now indicates, thank you, the draft calendar in front of us indicates that holidays start at sundown on the date listed, which for many holidays, like traditional Jewish holidays, Rosh Hashanah, it begins, in previous years, it says, starts the day be, on sundown the, the previous day.
I see.
So it's, it's just a different date listed.
Through the chair, that's correct. I thought that was confusing. It said, "Start holidays, start the day before." Even as we're updating the calendar for the past two years, I'm like, okay, is this the day before? You know, I honestly thought it was, it was clearer to just say, we're going to put the date that it starts. Some holidays may start at sundown on that day, and those ones are indicated by a star. So I, I took the kind of liberty of, of making that shift, because I thought it was clearer than somebody to have to know, so say, an educator who's referencing it and realizing, "Ooh, this actually was yesterday, but I thought it was today, because I didn't realize the star." So I just tried to keep it as, as clear as possible. Though if it feels like it was clearer prior, where it was kind of the day before... Though if it feels like it was clearer prior where it was kind of the day before, I can make that shift back. I just kind of took the liberty of shifting it, because I thought it would be a little bit more direct and indicate the exact day of the holiday, whether it starts, you know, at sundown or for that full day.
Dr. Phillips, did you respond?
Thanks through you Chair. I think that makes a ton of sense. I really love it. It's way clearer and less confusing. And I think speaks to a point that Dr. Ackman made last year, to the same point, so.
Ms. Paton?
Through you Chair, I think it's clearer too, because I was always getting questions about that. I also, just a really minor thing, on November, where it says first quarter, 8/27 to 10/31, I think that statement should go under October. It was just an oversight, because last year it went through to November, so.
Okay. If there are no further questions for now, this will be on our agenda again at our next meeting. Oh, Ms. Paton?
Just through the Chair, quick. Was there anything weird in this calendar, the same way we had last year, where we had to decide to have a long holiday break for winter? Was there anything strange on here that you wanna highlight for us, that we should be aware of?
Thank you through the Chair. Thank you for that question. Not quite. You know, we are, as Member Green named, we are, there are some contract languages about when breaks start. And last year was just because of where the 24th was, which is always a day that's close of December. And then, you know, it was a choice point whether we bring students back on a Monday and on a Friday. This year, I think it's much more clear. The first day for PD, for educators, is on a Friday, but the students would come back for a full day. And that's based on contract, the day after the winter break ends, so that's, I'm referencing January 2nd, 2026. But the first day for students is on a Monday, so I feel like that's much more clear cut and easy. So I don't think there's anything else that's kind of one of those interesting choice points. Thank you for the question.
Okay. With that, this will be on our agenda at our next meeting. That brings us to personnel report. Is there anything you wanna highlight, Dr. Ackman?
Yes. Through the Chairs, through the Chair, I have some retirements that I wanna share with the school committee. So Shelley Jarrow, resource room teacher retiring after 21 years of service. Elizabeth Melcher, Hada, a special education LA teacher at Somerville High School, retiring after four years of service. Michael Michel Bennett, skip teacher at Kennedy, retiring after 18 years of service. So thank you to all of our retirees for all the years of service and dedication to our SPS students. So thank you for that. And also, I wanted to acknowledge the resignation of our great Jackie Peaks, who was a great asset to our community. So we are in the process of that position has been posted and we are already receiving multiple candidates for that position. So I just wanted to, you know, recognize her presence in our district and her contribution. And also, we have added six parental leaves in the month of December. So the system continues to work and to facilitate the space for parents, new parents, to balance the needs of their kids. And we have three new hires, three new par professionals, and a dean of students at the East. So that is my, oh, and also I have a senior clerk at the high school and two skilled teachers, with the student enrollment at scale continues to increase, so that is a great gain for scale. So that's the news for them, from the enrollment world.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any questions on the personnel report? Okay, that brings us to some reports of subcommittees. I will entertain a motion.
I move to accept the, sorry, the report of the
Rules and Finance-
Of the Rules Management Subcommittee meeting from December 16th. Thank you.
I have a motion by Ms. Barish, seconded by Dr. Phillips. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We have another Subcommittee. Dr. Phillips?
I move to accept the report of the School Committee meeting for Finance and Facilities on December 18th, 2024.
I have a motion by Dr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Paton. If there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then we should also approve the bill rolls.
Yeah, I move to approve the November bill rolls.
That is a good question. We've always just done it with the Subcommittee reports, but you are right, it should technically be on the agenda. Yeah, no, that's a good point. No, no, that's totally fine. Make sure to add it to the next one and I'll make sure every time we have a Finance and Facilities Subcommittee report, I'll just make sure we have the bill rolls also on there. Thank you for that. Okay, that, oh yes, Dr. Phillips-
Sorry, friendly reminder everyone, Wednesday starts Finance and Facilities of the Whole, 7:00 PM, on Zoom.
Thank you for that reminder. Okay, that brings us to Subcommittee assignments. In your packet, you should have the list of the assignments. We are technically supposed to vote on it, which I wasn't aware of until now, but so I'm bringing it to you for a vote. If there are any questions.
Motion to approve the Subcommittee assignments as proposed.
Motion by Mr. Paton, seconded by Ms. Paton. If there is, yes, Ms. Barish?
Does it matter if something's missing from the Subcommittee assignments? Does it need to be added? Can we just amend it verbally?
Let's amend it. We'll have a friendly amendment and I'll make sure to add it.
I think, I don't think that the Public Safety For All Task Force was listed there.
Thank you for that reminder. You had told me that and I forgot, so thank you.
And I think that that assignment is going to end in the next couple of months.
So do you accept that friendly amendment, Mr. Paton?
With gratitude.
Okay, now if there is no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to a collective bargaining agreement that I need to be authorized to sign. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the Chair to sign the SEU Unit D Integrated Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Barish, seconded by Mr. Green. If there is no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the policy manual. Ms. Barish, do you wanna?
I just wanna recommend that we not vote on this tonight, simply because the second set of lawyers' comments were just put in the folder for tonight. I don't know if people have questions about them. I have questions about them that I'm gonna bring back to the lawyer and maybe to MASC and maybe to the administration, so. But if folks have questions, either you can share them with me now, you can send me an email, you can email Ms. Mallon. Because there's a lot there.
And just to clarify, the comments on the right of that document are comments from our lawyer?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. I, it is my understanding that the next sections are a bit less legal heavy. I don't think that every section of the manual is going to require so many hours of legal review and so many trips to the folder for these meetings. I hope that's the case, so.
Yep, Dr. Ackman?
Thank you through the Chair. Thank you for getting this underway, Ms. Barish. I am wondering, the next time we see a version, I'm comfortable not voting tonight, if we can get a, either like a a Word doc that we can toggle ourselves, or like a clean version and an edited version? Because it gets a little confusing with the red marks, if that makes sense.
That does make sense. I believe that Ms. Mallon said that she can put together sort of that iteration once we have resolved questions from the lawyer. So if you would prefer, if the body would prefer, that we try to resolve all those questions for the lawyer in rules before we bring them to this body, we can do it that way. I'm open to folks' input on that.
Mr. Paton?
Through you Chair. I guess my confusion about the document that's in our packets tonight is it's not clear exactly to me what the proposed changes are. And not necessarily that it's not tracked, but there's recommendations from MASC on the document, but not a clear direction about what the Subcommittee, which I'm on, is proposing. Unless I'm looking at the wrong document, which may be the case.
Ms. Paton?
Through the Chair, I apologize, I don't have the document in front of me, but my understanding, other than the legal questions, is we passed everything that MASC recommended. So basically, whatever's written there, unless there's some comment from the lawyer, is what the Subcommittee passed, and that's, you agree?
I agree. Additionally, the, there are notes in the Subcommittee report that reference some of those policies. But if it would be clearer to somehow incorporate the comments from the Subcommittee report into the document that comes to this body, we can work on, I can work on how to make that something that would be, that would not just be more confusing. But I guess I would like an understanding from this body, whether you would prefer that we resolve the legal comments in rules rather than bringing the legal comments here.
My thought would be yes, because it seems like it will make it easier. But I'm open to suggestions. Dr. Ackman and then Dr. Phillips?
All right, and maybe this is too much she said she said, but through the Chair, I would like to know, yes, you are capable of it, is that something you're willing to do? Like, I mean, I know you're willing, but like, is that your recommendation as Chair of the Rules Subcommittee, or do you not have one?
At this point, having gone through one section, I think making an attempt to respond to all the legal comments in rules first probably would make sense, because I suspect that most of us have the same questions or want further explanation of some of the same things. And at that point, I think it would be simpler to produce a cleaner document. I am willing, I don't know that I'm capable. But certainly, it will be, it would be easier to do that if the legal questions are more or less resolved.
And I enthusiastically support it. Okay, I had Dr. Phillips and then Ms. Paton?
Just a stupid clarification question, but where it says general note on the first page, they're not merging Lowell's policies, right?
That was a misprint, yes. They are in fact merging Somerville's policies, not Lowell's. We did bring that up, it should be corrected in the next version.
Through the Chair. Once we have a clean copy, and a redline copy, because I think you wanna see what the originals were, I don't wanna speak for my colleagues, but we have all the minutes from all the Rules meetings. If anybody, they're not huge. I really would not put more work on my colleague, Ms. Barish, to sort of come up with all the comments on there. And I would really encourage my colleagues, and I know it's a little more work on everyone else, to like, look at the minutes, because they're really not that long. And I think Ms. Barish did a really nice job documenting the questions and the concerns. So that's my thought, but, you know, if Ms. Barish really wants to do more annotation, we just don't wanna create more work, when we already have a record of everything.
I think the main concern for me, and perhaps that Dr. Ackman brought up to begin with, is just when we are ready to vote, to have an actual just clean, like, here are what the new policies will be that we are voting yes for. I think that's what's really important. In terms of a redline version and being altered rules, I'm certainly happy to do all that homework. I think it would just be really helpful to have, like, here are the new policies that we would be voting for. Mr. Paton and then, no, you didn't hear, Mr. Green?
For this one, for Section A, I certainly agree with Ms. Paton. I do think, as we go deeper into it, and we see the ones that are less legal changes and more like value and policy changes, having documents, not just for, I don't wanna share with the community, would be more valuable. For this one, which is legal compliance, yeah, I think you're absolutely right, we don't need to put that work on, Ms. Barish.
Okay. Great. This will go back to Rules and then come to us when it's ready. That brings us to an acceptance of some grants. We'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept all federal entitlement and continuation grants and all state continuation grants awarded to the Somerville Public Schools listed below. A private Somerville Art Council grant of $625 for the art department to be used for field trips.
Second. Motion by Ms. Barish, seconded by Ms. Paton. If there is no discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to donations.
I move to accept with gratitude the following donation monetary from Elsa Gomes Bondlow from Arlington, Mass. of $2,500 for the Unified Sports at Somerville High School.
Motion by Ms. Paton, seconded by Mr. Green. If there is no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you to Ms. Bondlow. That brings us to unfinished business. Is there any update on the MSBA?
Just a quick reminder, we, as you know, we're in the feasibility phase. And the OPM, I believe, has been higher, or is in the process of being higher, by the city. We also received a-
Find us what OPM stands for.
The owner's the project manager, that is something that is managed by the city. And we received an email from MSBA to make sure that we join what they call the POE, the Post Occupancy Evaluation. This is kind of a very robust assessment of the lessons learned, if you will. They will be doing surveys around what is the function and the challenges that students, families, administrators, and the community has experienced with the building. Also, they will do a virtual visit, a post-visit, and then will generate a set of lessons learned that can actually be important as we are actually building the next process for this, the new project that we have. So we are finalizing those dates to have the POE, or the Post Occupancy Evaluation. I don't know if the school committee will be part of that process at some point, but they will be interviewing different stakeholders that have some opinion about the impact or the functionality of the building. So that information is important. I met with Rich to talk about, Rich Rice, to talk about what's the role that the city has in that. So they are interested in learning the, whatever comes out of this process, just to, so we can apply it to the new building that is in the process, so.
Ms. Paton?
Thank you through you Chair. So the Post Occupancy Evaluation I missed, this is about the high school?
Correct. This is the, the, once the project is completed and all closed out, MSBA will do some kind of a post-mortem of systems and impact that the building has had in-
Yeah, so I do think that it would be valuable to include members that were on the building committee. So whether it's a city councillor, a school committee member, some of the, there's been several members. So I don't necessarily represent the whole experience. There have been student members. I know we might not be able to reach out to all of them, but we also have community members that were really valuable, such as Tom Bent. And so I would really encourage, because that will be more about the process than the outcome. So like, some of it obviously has to be the outcome and how the use of the building is, but I also think that feedback on the process would be really helpful to the new building.
Thank you, yeah. And they haven't reached out to me to ask for specific categories of who wants, who should be part of that, but that's a good question. And I, we have been back and forth with dates with the city, with this high school and MSBA, so that has been a little bit, that's taken time, and with the break, we kind of lost momentum, but that's coming up soon. But I'll inquire into that. Good question.
Dr. Phillips? Oh, okay. Mr. Paton?
Thank you Chair, through you. I just wanna note that the SomervilleMA.gov/MSBA website, which is supposed to be our portal for current information on this project, still lists the current status as eligibility phase ending no later than November 29th, 2024. In your conversations with the mayor, I hope that you can relay how important it is to keep this- is to keep this hub up to date. It's really a critical piece, place that all of us go for the latest information, so just, just a plug. Thank you.
Through the chair, I, I know that, that Jackie was having a, was a very influential force in keeping things up to date, and so I updated, but I will definitely bring that up to it. That is our, our combined website you're referring to? Thank you for, for letting me know, I, I wasn't fully aware of that.
Great. Is there any other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, that brings us to items from committee members. Okay. Yes, Mr. Green?
Since this is probably our last school committee meeting with the same federal government for a while, and it seems entirely likely that the first, if not one of, one of the first, if not the first bills that will be on the new president's desk will be a ban on trans student, trans students participating in sports where they're correct gender, it feels like this is a proper and appropriate time for us to evaluate compliance with our own gender identity support policies, see where we can strengthen them, and as part of our budget negotiations, really start talking about what does it mean to not take federal money, since that's the hook they're, they're hanging this on. So yeah, I'm just putting that on our to-do list for this upcoming year as rather a high priority.
Mr. Baton?
Thank you, chair, through you. I want to raise awareness, I, I know I received information about a letter from a, it's okay, from a group of municipal elected officials to Governor Moore Healy about the state's emergency housing shelter policy, and in particular, reductions in funding, time limitations for families being allowed to stay in the state shelter. A number of our city councilors and at least one of our colleagues has signed on to this letter. I intend to as well, and I encourage my colleagues here to take a look at that and see whether it would be something you also would like to sign on to. That's it.
Okay. Are there any other items? Seeing none, do we have condolences this evening?
The school committee extends its deepest condolences to the family of William H. Smith, beloved father of Kaylee Smith Gallatano, SPS Director of Equity and Excellence; James Blanchard, father-in-law of Michelle Klingon, Principal Account Clerk for Somerville Public Schools Out-of-School Time Program; and father of Jesse Klingon, Somerville's Ward for City Council member; and finally, the family of Richard Craven, husband of Debbie Connell, retired Special Education Director.
With that, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.